Everybody ready? Call to order, a meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, April 3rd, 2023. Please call to roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public comment pertaining to the agenda. We do have a public commenter at the end of the meeting. First order of business is the omnibus vote agenda, items that are considered routine and will be taken with one vote, unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Ms. Smith?
Item E, as in Edward.
Mr. Nord?
Item B, as in Bravo.
Move approval.
Second.
Items to be considered are the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of March 20th, 2023, a motion to reject bids for production of embroidery and screen printing for apparel for the 2023-24 year, a resolution authorizing the execution of a three-year agreement with Gateway Fireworks Displays of St. Louis, Missouri for the annual 4th of July fireworks display for the years 2023, 24, and 25, and a resolution authorizing the filing of the Town of Normal's Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for Program Year 2023-2024. Please call to roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Those items are approved. Item B is a report to receive and file town of Normal expenditures for payment as of March 29th, 2023. Mr. Nord?
I so move. Second.
Mr. Nord?
On PDF page 22, which is expense page 13, under the American Recovery Plan bucket, there's an item that says Maplewood Sewer Study. My question is, is we had folks that during the storms of 2021 complained of sewage coming up in their basements? Is this to address that neighborhood?
Yes, this particular action does address just the Maplewood neighborhood, which was kind of the south central part of the community. Yes.
But specifically for the sewage backing up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad we're finally getting to that because there are still areas that do have sewage problems backing up in their basement. Thank you.
Further on this item? Please call to roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That item is approved. Item E is a resolution to accept bids and award a contract to JG Stewart Contractors, Incorporated for the 2023 miscellaneous sidewalk improvements, so 50/50 sidewalk and ADA ramps project in the amount of $773,345. Ms. Smith?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
I had sent an email to Ms. Reese to ask her to specifically whether or not we were increasing the funding for sidewalks as we had for paving of roadways. And if you could, please just share your response with the town?
Sure. This particular action item requests council to approve a contract in the amount of $773,000. Last year's contract for sidewalks, and we do this annually, last year's contract was about $650,000. So certainly we're focusing on spending additional dollars on sidewalk and ADA improvements this year.
And those, the work will be carried out throughout the year?
Correct.
Okay.
Throughout the whole construction season.
Okay. Thank you.
Further on this item? Please call to roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That item is approved. We move to general orders. We have three items tonight, the first of which is an ordinance annexing property in the Town of Normal, 36.39 plus or minus acres at the northeast west corner of Beach Street and Towanda Avenue, having to do with the Carden Springs PUD.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there discussion on this item?
Mayor Kuss, I'll just introduce this. This mirrors, these three action items, all, the next three items all pertain to the same project, which is Carden Springs at the intersection of Beach Street and Towanda Avenue and just east of Wintergreen Subdivision. These three action items all mirror the annexation agreement that council entered into in January. This pertains to 477 units of multifamily, and those will be apartments and townhomes. There will be onsite amenities, and the last action item pertaining to this will be the formal approval of the planned unit development. Staff can certainly answer any questions council may have, but this all follows the annexation agreement required of the developer and the things that the town agreed to back in January.
Seeing none, please call to roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That item is approved. Item A is an ordinance rezoning property in the Town of Normal, having to do with the same property.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion on this item? Please call to roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That item is approved. Item Nine is a resolution approving the Carden Springs preliminary planned unit development at the northwest corner of Beach Street and Towanda Avenue.
Move approval.
Discussion on this item. Mr. Nord?
Is this to the same way that it was presented last time?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'm in favor of this. I think it's fantastic. We've got 477 homes. Is that the right number? Units, which equates to places people can live that are going to be in Normal. We took it from agricultural taxed to now, you know, taxed as it would be for our homes. So this is going to help bring additional tax revenue to all the taxing bodies, which is fantastic because that helps raise money for all the different taxing bodies without going back to the taxpayers to raise their taxes. So I'm in favor of this. Also, this developer, they are building their own roads, and they're going to maintain those. So we don't have to worry about paying to replace the concrete in the future and things like that that we have in a lot of other neighborhoods. So thank you for doing this, developers.
Further on this item? Mr. Preston?
I'll just throw in one more positive about the developers here with this. They are local, and that is always a plus as well.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
If I could have either Ms. Reese or Ms. Davis address the timing of the construction of this, because as a planned urban development, it doesn't have the same lag time that builders would be encountering as they're selling individual lots to build private homes, but there is still some timing issues on construction of planned urban development.
That's correct, and Mr. Tremmel will come forward to talk about that process. The developer does need to, has a lot of work to do to prepare for 477 units, including extending utilities, building the infrastructure on their property, and will be phasing in the actual buildings themselves. So Mr. Tremmel probably knows a better timeline.
And again, a project of this size and acreage and units is going to take more than just a year or two to build, probably over three years. But I think in talking with the developer, the discussions are right now, they're working on their construction plans to do a bunch of infrastructure on the site, sewer and water, internal private roadways, that type of thing. And I think they'll probably be in position to maybe do some work later this fall, where you might start seeing structures come out in the ground and maybe carry through the winter, but I think you won't probably see units available to be occupied probably till next year about this time. And that would be, you know, with a lot of everything falling into place in the way of weather and supplies and that type of thing, so.
And just for clarification on real estate taxes, there's even still a 12-month delay before real estate.
Probably a couple of years out.
Okay.
And I think the goal is to probably try and do this in three identifiable chunks, as far as how phasing the units, probably 120 or 40 units at a time, so.
And while the developer is building the roads, there will be private roads within the development itself, the Town of Normal is still providing fire and police service and road and-
True, yes.
And snow removal.
Police, fire service, all the ordinary services, and there will be public infrastructure in the way of sewer and water inside the development.
Thank you.
Further? Mr. Nord?
Snow removal? Does the town provide snow removal?
No, not within the property.
Or garbage collection.
Yeah, yeah. Also, I wanted to thank the developer for working with the residents because this one went so much smoother because they worked with the residents, and I hope that developers that are watching will do the same going forward.
Please call to roll. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin.
That's all right. I was a little late getting my hand up, mayor. I just build a little bit upon my colleagues. Certainly, we appreciate anytime a local developer wants to invest here in Normal and believes as we do, it's a good bet. I do want to echo something from a previous meeting that a resident attorney here, on behalf of the developer, shared, and remind everybody of the kudos that was given from the developer to the town staff. Ms. Reese, your staff knew on how well you helped them manage the process of getting to this point to begin putting 477 new units in town. So thanks to all the staff for all your work on that.
Please call to roll.
Mr. McCarthy? Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. That resolution is approved. We have one item of new business tonight, and that is a motion to approve appointments and reappointments to various boards, commissions, and committees.
Move approval.
Second.
And before we begin discussion, Mr. McCarthy, would you read that lengthy list?
Get a drink first. Okay. These are annual, or not annual, but regular reappointments. We have to the Building Board of Appeals, Tom Anderson, Tim Bassett, Brian Houchen, Paul Shartnett, and Jeremy Wilcox, all terms expiring on March 31st of 2027. To the Historic Preservation Commission, we have Kathy Burgess and Mader, Robert Porter, again with their terms expiring on 3/31/2027. To the Human Relations Commission, we have William Brown, 3/31/27 is his expiration date on that commission. To the Planning Commission, we have Bob Broad, Mike Metica, and Jay Tamala. All three terms expire on March 31st of 2027. To the Uptown Design Review Commission, we have Kyle Glendon, Rick Kessler, and Charles McGuire. Their terms expire at 3/31/2026. To the Zoning Board of Appeals, we have Todd Anderson and Corinne Brand. Their terms expire on March 31st, 2027. Those are reappointments. We have some new appointments. To the Historic Preservation Commission, we have Dr. Justin Vickers. Dr. Vickers is a distinguished professor of music at Illinois State University. He's worked for many years internationally as a professional opera singer and has shifted focus to work as a music historian. He's a native of Danville, doctorate from U of I in Champaign, master of music from University of Kentucky, and bachelor at UIC. He's a Normal resident and been surrounded by the Highland Historic District, Cedar Crest Historic District, and the Van Leeers Broadview Mansion. He's filling a vacant, a longstanding vacancy on that board. For the Planning Commission, we have two new appointments. Tim McHugh, Mr. McHugh is a resident of Normal and also employed at Illinois State University as a coordinator in the Department of Housing Services. He's also a business owner of Open Doors Consulting. He serves as a member of the Connect Transit Board of Trustees and has served on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Planning Commission. Mr. McHugh is filling a seat vacated by Rachel Lund. We also have Jessica Woods. Ms. Woods is a corporate attorney and a resident of Normal. She has a public sector experience. She served as the deputy corporal counsel right here in the Town of Normal and was assistant state's attorney for McLean County and is currently employed in the Legal Department of State Farm Insurance. She's looking forward to volunteering her time on the commission, and she is filling a vacated seat by Tracy Wittergren. Lastly, on the Zoning Board of Appeals, we have Mr. Craig Queen. He's a long-term resident of Normal, also an attorney. He is in private practice and is an active member of the McLean County Bar and the Illinois State Bar as well. He has an interest in volunteering his time and having an impact on the community by serving on the board. He is filling a seat vacated by Tony Penn.
Discussion on this? Mr. Nord?
So there's 21 people that were appointing or reappointing, and the public, has the public been informed? Or when did the public learn of these names of the folks that are going to be appointed to boards that are supposed to act on their behalf?
That would be this evening.
Like just a few minutes ago?
That would be this evening.
Okay, so just a few minutes ago. So the public had no chance to contact their council members and give them public input. They had no chance to come and speak before the council on these folks. I've talked about this before, and I do it every time. Bloomington, they allow the public to know, so that way they can come speak. Mr. Mayor, even you are up for appointment for a federal board, and the public was made aware of that. But here in Normal, this is the only municipality that I have seen, which I'm sure there's probably others, where the public has no idea who's being appointed to offices within their government until after their chance to speak, well, without having any chance to actually speak about it. Our municipal code says that the council is supposed to give advice and consent to any of these appointments. How can we do our due diligence if we don't open it up to the public for them to give us advice on some of these folks? Because, you know, I don't know all these folks. You know, they may be perfectly fine, but I think that that's our responsibility, and that's why I'm not going to vote in favor of this, because the public has not had a chance to speak on this. Thank you.
I understand your position, Mr. Nord, and it's certainly your right to do that. I will state that in my 20-some years of doing this, no one has ever asked about this.
Except for the past four years.
Except you.
The past four years.
Further on this item? Please call to roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Those appointments are approved. We have one public commenter tonight, Maggie Hayes. So just to go over the rules for public comment, you have three, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak to the council.
My name is Maggie Hayes. I live on Charlotte Drive in Normal. I'm here to talk about the condition of my sack properties on our street. Beginning in October of 2020, at least myself and I know some others, brought issues to the inspections Department in March of 2021. The town told me that significant accumulations would result in those buildings to drop a bag of garbage on the front street, on the curb, or in the front yard, like when they're going to go park. Class Sack doesn't clean up properly, and eventually-
Ms. Hayes, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. You exceeded your time.
I'm almost done. I especially want to see everyone to see the pictures, the trash that the animals get into, the eviction leavings that they left on our street for days until the Town of Normal cleaned it up.
Ms. Hayes, you're going to have to stop now.
You don't want to see all of this?
We'd be happy to see them, but not in public comment. We have time limits on our public comment.
I'm going to leave them here, because other people might want to look.
Sure.
I move to extend the time three minutes.
I'm not sure if we-
I'm almost done.
Go ahead. But I'm going to ask you to be brief.
Two days after, two days after the eviction leavings that I showed you, this appeared on the street in front of a different building where it also sat for days. This is from May of 2022, also sat for days. The tipping point for us was last, two weeks ago, I guess it was, when Class Sack employees filled the dumpster with things that weren't garbage. They were doing a remodel or something. These pictures were taken by my neighbors and provided to the town and to the Class Sack, or they called Class Sack, is what they told me. They also dumped this pile of carpet and carpet pad by the side yard. So my neighbors complained at Class Sack.
Ms. Hayes, I'm going to ask you to stop now. We certainly understand the situation. If you'd leave those pictures with us, and we do have your written report.
I actually have a composite that I'm going to leave with you, mayor. Aside from the carpet that they then moved into the front yard.
Ms. Hayes, I'm going to ask you to stand down, please.
Okay, I will do that. I want you to know that the pantograph has got all of these as well, and they have the emails, and I hope they write an article because I think a light needs to be shown on not only what Class Sack is doing, but on what the Town of Normal is not.
That concludes our business here tonight. Before taking a motion for adjournment, I would ask, are there concerns or comments from council? Ms. Smith?
I just want to commend Maggie Ruttenbeck with Bloomington SOAR. Last Friday, SOAR participants were planning to attend a formal dance, but with the bad weather in the area, not only did she send out an email in a timely manner to alert families not to risk having their loved ones endanger themselves by getting out in the storm, but she followed up with a personal phone call to make sure that everyone had received the email. And it's that kind of personal touch and concern that really makes me feel proud that we live in a community with that kind of caring. Thank you.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. I've got a concern about the town pushing forward state legislation that has now been titled HB 3337. This has been spoken before in front of the House Commission, one of the House Commissions, and Councilman McCarthy went there and spoke and said that he was mayor pro temp and speaking on behalf of the town. And apparently, the state legislators have also been informed that this was a town sanctioned initiative going forward. Well, what this amendment, there's, what this bill is, there's really two amendments that have been spoken about. Mr. McCarthy spoke about one that talked about adding a definition for park districts to be kind of a department that a municipality operates, kind of like our Park District, which is pretty benign. It also then talks about having some language that applies only to Cicero instead of all incorporated towns. And then something, well, there's a whole lot of language in the one that he spoke about. It's, gosh, four pages of text. And then the public became aware of this, you know, so I went down to the next time you could speak on this. Amendment two was pulled. It was not spoken about. It was then Amendment three that was spoken about, and this is the one that came through. It's very, very short, extremely short, but it only applies to the Town of Normal. And what it does is something very different than these lawsuits that the town has been in trying to, well, for residents that have either wanted district-based elections or for the town to actually follow rules for being an incorporated town. What this one says is, it's short. "Town of Normal officers, period. For the Town of Normal, a president must be elected every four years of the general municipal election with other offices to be elected or appointed as set forth by ordinance of the corporate authorities. And each officer shall continue to hold the office until the officer's successor is selected and qualified, yada, yada." Well, what this means is the only required elected position we have is the mayor. The other ones, all can be appointed. That's what this says. So when you shake your head, this is why this needs to be discussed here at the Town of Normal Council, so the public can hear what this is. Because it's very different than what was proposed the first time. This is what it says, and for things to be going forward under the, I guess, flag of the Town of Normal, is this is an official corporate action, it needs to be voted on. And that did not happen, you know, so this should come back so the citizens of Normal can hear what this is. They know who to- they know who to hold accountable. Because even the state rep that brought this forward, she doesn't represent the entire Town of Normal. There's a significant part of Normal that she doesn't represent, you know, it's outside of her district. The same with the senator that's bringing this forward. Who are the folks going to hold accountable if they don't like this? Who are they going to reward if they do like it? This should have been heard here. It only applies to Normal. And for those folks that kind of watch the ADA type of things, if they have a motto, nothing about us, without us, and that is exactly how this went forward. It is all about Normal, but it has been done without us. And I just think it's very disingenuous that this has been going forward as a corporate act when there's been no resolution to do so. And that worries me.
Further comment?
Very different topic, but I wanted to be sure to pass on a compliment that I heard recently. Mr. Tremmel came up to, as he often does, to the hot seat. Got off easy this time, I think, but this person just reached out to me and was very complimentary of our inspection staff and their responsiveness and our planning staff, and so I just wanted to pass that along as a compliment.
Are we going to correct the-
Please.
Yes. Misstatement about what the legislation actually does versus what it doesn't do.
I think Mr. Day is going to, I'm going to ask him to speak to that.
Thank you.
Further comments before I go to Mr. Day?
This, this needs to be done publicly where the public can come in and speak about this.
Mr. Nord, you're out of order.
The public can't come speak on this. This is moving forward.
Mr. Day?
All right, can everybody hear me? Two important legal issues I want to talk about. First is the interpretation of House Bill 3337 and sort of the idea that it would lead to the council not being elected. That is an interpretation. It's an incorrect one, I believe. That was an interpretation that would lead to absurd results that would conflict with numerous other provisions of the Illinois Municipal Code. And obviously, it would be a ridiculous situation if this were ever to go to court. It would get laughed out of court if somebody tried to say you don't have to elect your council. So the general rule in Illinois law is you don't interpret statutes that would lead to absurd results, of which that interpretation certainly would. The Illinois Municipal Code itself frequently distinguishes between the aldermen- The Illinois Municipal Code itself frequently distinguishes between the aldermen, trustees, and other executive or administrative officers. Um, probably the most prominent example I could think of is the one that Mr. Nord brought to our attention, section 3.1 dash 25 dash 95. If you uh remember, that is the one that was supposedly to apply to the, it's supposed to apply only to the town of Cicero. Um, that statute is retitled Incorporated Town Officers and goes on to list those officers as the president, clerk, assessor, collector, and supervisor. For the eagle-eared among you, you will notice that there's somebody missing from that list of Incorporated Town Officers, and that is, of course, the council. So if you were to apply that exact same analysis to this statute, then you wouldn't even have a council in a uh, under that statute for any municipality that's supposed to follow that statute, which is, again, of course, absurd and belied by other provisions of the Illinois Municipal Code. So certainly, that is not a requi- uh, a reasonable interpretation that House Bill 3337 would uh eliminate the need for elected council, that we would still have an elected council. Having said that, if that is the objection to this and people are concerned about that, I'm sure there was a way to work in the state legislature to correct what is obviously not an intended result. And more importantly, having addressed that, uh, the more pressing legal issue is for those people who surf the internet will have heard that uh there are some crazy laws in the state of Illinois. Uh, chief among them is that it is illegal in the town of Normal for anybody to smile at a dog. This comes up every year. We are currently in another cycle where apparently that has popped up, that it is illegal to smile at a dog. And we get tons of questions constantly from people asking how such a crazy law could have happened. I can assure you, that is not the law in the town of Normal. It has never been the law in the town of Normal. And it turns out that some things on the internet aren't always accurate. So if anybody has any questions about whether or not you can smile at a dog, rest assured that you are allowed to smile at pretty much any animal you want.
Thank you. Uh, motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.